Called to order the work session for the City Council of East Grand Forks, Tuesday, September 26, 2017. It's now five o'clock. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Dander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holtz.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Russell.
Here.
Home Secretary Lawrence Better.
Here.
Mike Parkervinski.
Here.
Tim Ranthel.
Here.
Henry Tweed.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Does turn quorum. Start off by swearing in two officers. Chief Headland.
These are our two newest officers, Tyler Corrier and Felicia Zanetta. And we'll go ahead and let this four of you both in. Do you mind?
Not a problem.
Repeat after me. The first thing we'll be doing is the law enforcement oath of honors. Please raise your right hand. I'm my honor.
I'm my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold.
I will always have the courage to hold.
Myself and others.
Myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Now it's the oath of office. I state your name.
I, Tyler Corrier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Police Officer for the City of East Grand Forks.
Police Officer for the City of East Grand Forks.
County of Polk.
County of Polk.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
You guys don't have to leave yet. I like it. I almost got tased. That's better yet.
All right, we'll move on to number one. Bid results from decommissioning of ponds. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did open bids for your 2016 city project number one, wastewater pond decommissioning project. Last Wednesday, September 20th, we did receive two bids. With this project, we did have quite a few more requirements than we typically have in a project. We did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, which we did hold on August 31st. And any general contractors that wanted to submit a bid needed to attend that pre-bid meeting. And then with the bid package, some of the normal stuff, of course, we had a 5% bid security, which we typically always have, responsible contractor form, which is typical nowadays. We did have in there that they had to submit a biosolids dewatering management plan, as well as listing who their type four certified operator was, which is for basically handling of the biosolids. And again, what we wanted to do there is just make sure, again, the contractor had kind of a plan in place of how he was going to handle the biosolids, how he was going to dewater them. Reviewing both bids, they were very similar, how they were going to handle the biosolids due their dewatering. We kind of jokingly said that who stole whose management plan because they were that close. And then we also had a biosolids field review form. And basically what that was, we just had a form that the contractor signed off on, basically stating that they had completed any necessary site investigation to determine the depth of biosolids in both the primary and secondary pond. Again, both contractors, you know, signed off that they had done all their necessary investigation work on that. So, right now, bids are about $458,000 of separation. Numbers did come in pretty much where we anticipated. We did have a question or two that came up late, shortly prior to the bid opening, about the evening before. And so, before we can even make any recommendation, we actually got a conference call set up with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency tomorrow to get these questions answered. I think both, right now, I mean, both contractors are playing on the same field, but we need to get some clarification from MPCA to make sure that, you know, these questions may or may not affect our bid. So, until we have our conference call tomorrow, get some answers, you know, I don't have a recommendation yet as far as awards. So, I am hoping we can get everything done here, you know, over the next week, and then have a recommendation for you at your council meeting next week.
Anybody have any questions for? Henry?
Are you going to have this taped, or you're going to have some type of verification so there's no question as long as they're in the same ballpark so we get needlessly into litigation? And I'd like to make one other comment, and I've made it before. You're going to have a residue there for backup of roughly 22 acres. After a period of time, you're going to find that developers want to buy that property. I think that if we're looking in the future, it's very, very important that we start directing the city east because it will save us substantial money as far as future development. Am I correct there?
That's correct.
So, you people that are going to be here 20 years from now, remember our discussion. No further comment.
One thing, I guess I should mention is, our two bidders, we had Zaverels and we had Bersky Excavating out of Race, Minnesota. Right now, the apparent low bidder is Bersky Excavating. But, again, we've got to do all of our necessary investigation work before we bring any recommendation forward, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Mike?
Sorry.
That's okay. This discussion you're going to have with MPCA, does that, is that to make sure that we're crystal clear with them? What needs to be done with, you know, the dewatering and the treatment of the biosolids so that these bids that we have reflect accurately and that they, you know, we always had this discussion through this long, laborious process of whether we do lagoons or the interconnect or whatever. The question of decommissioning the ponds was always one that there was some fuzziness from the MPCA about whether we had to land apply the biosolids somewhere else or leave them in place. Is that sort of the, where you're heading with this?
You're actually pretty much reading my mind, Mike. Those are exactly the questions we have. Mr. Volprey did a lot of work on this. He always dealt with, her name was Georgia DeFrain with MPCA.
Yep.
Since then, she has retired.
I remember her name. I've heard it often.
Yep. So, we actually have another gal that we're dealing with. Her name is Sherry Bach. She's out of the Baxter office. And again, that's what we want to verify with her, is the ability to leave these biosolids on-site and not have to haul them off-site. Again, both contractors right now bid the project to leave them on-site, so we don't want any surprises. Get into this, find out that we can't leave them all on-site, that we've got to haul them off-site, which would be major change order. So, again, we want those questions answered, confirmed, before we award the project.
So, we're dealing with a different person who's a regulator than we did back when they told us we could do it this way, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. So, that's, like I said, we just want to confirm everything before we go ahead and award the project.
Right. I agree with Henry. We don't want, we don't want to end up in a courtroom.
Nope.
So, your job is to make sure that we're clear about what has to be done with these biosolids.
That's our job.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? See none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Keep us updated. Number two, surplus vehicles for 2017 fall auction. Headland.
Thank you. These vehicles, as from our earlier auction, are all seized and forfeited vehicles that are either DWI or drug forfeitures. Just to give you a heads-up, by the time you get the final list next week, there will be some additional vehicles, both from, I believe, Parks and Rec and Public Works, as well as, I believe, at least one more from the police department that's a current fleet vehicle that we're going to be actually looking to change our fleet around a little bit. And I'll come to you with more information on that at a later date, but that's, those will also be added to the final list for approval next week.
Anybody else have anything?
Is this an online auction?
Yes, it is.
When you go online to look at these vehicles, is there a better description than this about the condition of them, the number of miles, that sort of thing?
Yep. We list miles exactly, and then we list a number, or we show a number of photographs, at least one of the interior, and then we do all sides of the vehicles as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And we always make a notation in there, letting people know that they are drug and or DWI forfeited vehicles, so they have an idea that it's probably not a pristine vehicle.
I don't know if there's any bullet holes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Chief. Number three, demo permit application and permit fee.
After the flood of '97, the council approved by resolution a requirement for a demolition permit. Inadvertently, when we switched from a paper permitting system to an online permitting system through Springbrook, the building permit office deleted it from our permit files, so we were unaware, new staff, that there was a demo permit required. That being said, we found out that there was one necessary, so we wrote out a new permit application. Just a few more things we'd like to keep track of. Abandonment of water sewer main, a couple of different things that people were demoing buildings for, that we weren't quite getting the information until the last minute. So, that's what I've got presented to you as a new permit application. Again, it's already been passed by resolution, so we're just asking for a fee of $45, which is similar to our excavation permit. And then, we have added a deposit that Water and Light and Public Works wanted to see in case there was work done within the berm or within the street that was not brought back to the satisfaction of those departments, then we'd have the funds available to then repair those, so.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
How much is the deposit?
It's dependent on where the work's being done. According to the application, sorry, I'm not, I don't have it on the top of my head. It's $1,500 if they're abandoning in the berm, so if we have to come back and seed or sod it or do any dirt work. $4,000 if it's in bituminous and $7,500 if it's in a concrete street.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, obviously, they get the, they'll get that back. Water and Light will be out there to do the inspection once it's completed, so, and then the money will be given back to them, so. It goes to council approval hopefully next Tuesday. I will be out of town at an ADA transition workshop, so if you have any questions before Tuesday, just let me know by the end of the week. And then, the second thing would be is that I'm also gone on the 17th, which is the other council meeting, for Transit Conference, where I'm accepting our funds for the expansion service and getting my bus ordered. So, we will have council action on the 17th for the Stokes property that Judge Staus is going to be developing. So, I'm going to bring that forward at the work session the Tuesday before. And then, anything additional that comes up in the planning commission meeting, I'll have prepped. Either Paul or Mark will be available, or David, to answer those questions on the 17th. But, I don't want to leave you kind of with a lot of questions on the 17th, so I'll bring that to the work session so we can go through it, and that, again, will help him better prepare for the council meeting and the planning commission meeting as well, so.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do you want to move on to number five? Paul?
Yes, please. I was going to ask if you could do that.
Okay. Number five, down payment assistance program update. We'll go back to number four after Mr. Wilford is present.
Mr. Wilford had a meeting over at the Avaris Center earlier, and he's on his way. And if you can get a bus now. Thank you.
With regard to the down payment assistance program, the EDA at its last meeting spent a considerable amount of time regarding the $5,000 program and whether it could be rolled into this program, or whether they needed to continue as separate programs. EDA has not completed its discussion on the $5,000 program and has decided that it would be better if this were handled separately. This is an existing program. It comes out of a different account than the monies that we use for the $5,000 program. The monies in here are actually lent to a prospective purchaser and repaid. The only way that they do not get repaid is in case of default on that loan. It's a maximum amount of $7,500. The first year is interest-free and payment-free, and then they have, I think, six or seven years, I don't remember, to pay the loan back to the city. It's at 5%. The limits right now are set at $140,000 for the house value and $80,000 for family income. That's not, those have changed over time and increased over time, and they're not really realistic in today's local real estate market. And what the EDA is proposing is that those limits be changed to $200,000 for the home value and $100,000 for the family income. And they ask, they recommended in favor of that, and they ask that the city council ratify that action.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Was there any rationale for choosing a fixed interest rate rather than pegging it to something so that we, or are you going to review it every year or what's the process?
The interest rate is the interest rate that has been there for years. It has not been reviewed. It could be reviewed, but it's not, we did not, we just made very minor changes in the program and left it basically as is.
Thank you. I guess I would suggest pegging it to something, I guess. Whatever. I mean, it's just, to have it fixed, a year from now, interest rates could, you know, double, who knows? And if it's, if it's done this way, it just leaves you inflexible. I would allow, I would say it should be, or even just don't legislate the rate, just say, have it determined at the staff level or whatever. I mean, administratively, I don't, I just don't think you need to fix that legislatively because it's harder to undo, it's harder, unless you put in a rechecking clause, it has to be reviewed every quarter or something, or whatever you thought was.
The nice thing about publishing it is so that the prospective one who could benefit from the program can see the rate. So, I guess I'd rather see it either fixed at a number or maybe indexed to another index that you identify.
And that's what, I agree. I think you want to have it a low rate, but you also want to protect ourselves too. So, if you index it to something, it's fine, publish that, but I just think.
To make it more dynamic.
Things could change either way. I mean, maybe if all of a sudden rates go down, which I don't know how they can go down much further, but if they do, then this incentive isn't as, is as beneficial.
So, you're looking at either prime plus one or whatever.
Right. Something, I guess, is what I would say.
We work with the lender on these loans to make sure that the people who get these loans are not going to be taking, biting off too much more than they can handle. So, we could take a look at their interest rate for the loan that they're going to get, and we could even use that loan rate. So, they have the same loan rate for both Mike and Tim. I mean, you're EDA members too.
Or that loan rate at a discount. You could do that, too. The difference there is if someone has a 15-year fixed or a 30-year variable, those rates are going to fluctuate a lot, even on today. So, I might rather see it indexed to prime plus something or.
Prime plus one?
I'm fine with that. Yeah. I think that makes sense.
Okay. We'll just do prime plus one.
Is this just on purchasing, not including construction?
This is only on existing homes.
Okay.
This is not a program that applies to new construction.
I would say usually if you do a construction, your rates are a little bit lower than normally they are. I just want to make sure we clarified that.
Two, just two other things.
Sure.
Just so I'm clear, so, we're still figuring that a person will have to, on a $200,000 home, would have to come up with, what, 32.5 about on their own?
Or whatever the requirement is.
I mean, that's, if you're using a 20% rule, right, or, okay. Which, okay. And then, the second is, does this get recorded in like second position or what?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's all, just thank you.
Thank you. That's true. You just looked puzzled, I was wondering.
Just listening. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
And your forgivable thing also is recorded as a mortgage, but behind?
Well, this does not involve any forgivable portion.
Correct.
But the $5,000 is recorded as a mortgage.
Yes.
And at the end of 10 years, it can be released.
Yep.
If they have satisfied the requirements, and they haven't satisfied the requirements, they have to repay the loan.
But that comes in behind the bank mortgage also.
Yes, it's also second position. If there is enough value, what we have had is a couple of instances where people have taken their original loan, they made changes in the home that increased the value, so they ended up having to get actually a second mortgage from the bank on top of the first one. If there's enough value by the appraisal, the EDA has approved a couple of those in third position, but the value is there in the home so that it is a loan that has value protecting it.
Chad?
If you make these changes, does it have to go back to EDA before it comes back to us?
On the interest rate, I don't think so. The biggest things the EDA was concerned about was the limit on the whole house value and the limit on the income value, because those seem to be the biggest impediments to the use of this. We've done one loan in the two and a half years I've been here, and this should open it up and make it a little bit more available to help families get into homes, existing homes in town. And I've talked to, like I said, that's why I consulted with both Mike and Tim, and I think we can proceed with this at the interest rate. And I will inform the EDA at their next meeting what has been done.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Seeing none? We'll move on. We'll come back to number four again later. Number six, Coalition of Greater Minnesota voluntary assessment requests.
This is pretty straightforward. We received another request from the coalition to do a voluntary assessment for wastewater projects. It will allow them to lobby on behalf of all the cities to try and challenge some of the things that the MPCA has done at this point. We've received this request for the last couple of years and have not gone along with it, and that is what David is recommending at this time. Yes, is there any question?
Thank you, ma'am. Move on, discussion on liquor license fees. Megan?
Okay. As it states in the RCA, we did amend our liquor license ordinance. The assumption was made, my fault, that the transfer portion had not been changed, which it had. When we were contacted by a new business coming to town, they were told it was a $25 fee for a transfer. And so, I guess at this time, we need direction from the council. Do we just do the $25 transfer, or do we prorate the liquor license and have them pay? I believe it, it looks like a possible end of November, beginning in December timeframe. And I guess, just so the council is aware, that vocation was paid for in full by the previous owner. There was nothing that was refunded. They paid for a liquor license in full, for a full year. So, I just need direction from the council on what fee is collected.
Anybody have your, Mr. Dander?
My two cents would be, give them what was quoted. You know, they were told to give them fee, and we should just follow through on that? That's my two cents. And that's actually the recommendation also from Mr. Murphy.
I can live with that.
Anybody else have anything with that? Mr. Demers?
I guess, I guess my take is, is we should be allowed to make errors. Just because we make an incorrect assumption doesn't mean that anything really substantially has changed. I guess maybe they changed their entire budget operation, but I doubt it. I guess part of what liquor licenses do is tether you to that business beyond what you're just, you know, being invested financially. I think the financial part is important. I would, if it was just my opinion, I guess I would say, follow our ordinance as we, as it was changed. Like I said, I, I don't think that if you make a mistake, it just washes, it absolves everybody of any responsibility. I would bet she, it was an honest mistake. We can honestly say it was a mistake. It wasn't an attempt to deceive them or, you know, or anything like that. And I think that's, there's nothing wrong procedurally or ethically in going back and saying that was the wrong price.
Should we refund Whitey's, the unused portion, of the year?
That's, that hasn't been a policy, right? I mean.
But I'm just saying, we did receive the whole year's worth, and then they were told this.
Right. But the liquor license isn't, part of it is because of the ownership, right? And I mean, you do it because, like you said, you don't just transfer it because this is a new group that we want invested financially in that liquor license, is my opinion, is why you do it. I guess, I don't think we've refunded partials in the past, but I would say that that's a separate, I would say that that's a separate issue. I mean, we're dealing with the new group now. But that's, my opinion, it sounds like there's people that are willing to go ahead with the $25 fee, but I would, I would disagree.
I will just add that we do collect all the information. We treat it like a new license, and they do pay the background fee, background fee is something separate from this, so that has already been collected, and so in that respect, that's all.
Looking at it back then, the $25 fee is no big deal. Now, you're talking double-dipping almost, to my opinion, with $2,300.
Bad start. I mean, you're doing business in a community that you're unfamiliar, that's just a bad start for them, where you changed the rules midstream.
Well, we didn't change the rules.
But in, to them, right?
We just misinformed them.
Correct.
Which were going, and it was found out, and we went back and corrected them. I'm sure if it was the other way, you know, they would, they would be saying, well, no, you, you know, you need to change it if we said it was 2,500, and then, oh, wait, we changed it to 25. They would say, no, change it back, or whatever, you know? So, my point is, is we have a policy in place, I think we should follow it. And I don't think it's double-dipping either, because the, I don't, because, yes, there's more dollars.
In this case here, I feel like it is.
I just.
We made a mistake.
It's a new management group, and that in itself is a whole different relationship that's being built. So, I just.
Okay.
So, it'll come to the council, and we'll see.
Everybody's fine with $25, I'm assuming, that's already spoke, so. Henry, fine with $25?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Clarence?
We're standing both sides of that. Rock and roll. See who puts their arms in the air.
What called me to be doing that?
Well, you'd be lucky, because there'll be a tie vote if there is, because I'm not here next week.
Oh, good. The mayor gets to decide.
I'm still deciding, too.
Yeah.
All righty. 25 it is, moving forth right now, so. Number eight, Board and Commission Trisform.
Mayor, feel free to jump in at any point on this as well. Earlier, again, we had discussed a boards and commission application process. I brought something forward, a template that was available on our website. I had the mayor review it, made a few modifications and changes to it, and we changed it instead of an application form to an interest form. As recommended on the RCA that was put with this, we would follow records retention. So, if somebody applies or. So if somebody applies or completes the interest form and submits it, we'll keep it on file for a year. So when there is an opening, if something comes up, middle of the year, anything along those lines, we have people we can contact. Otherwise, I guess, are you guys interested in moving forward with this?
I think so, question here in select. How easy that change?
That is actually a drop down menu, and I have all of our boards and commissions already listed in there.
How easy to change if we add some?
All I gotta do is.
Like Parks, for example.
Yep, all I gotta do is add it. Just add, delete.
One comment. Um, I, I really like this, I think this is something that, that the council is, has expressed an interest in doing. Um, the only thing I would ask is that we do our level best to reach out and engage the community, let them know that these positions are available and invite people who are interested, do as good a job as we can to let them know in a timely manner that if they're interested in serving the community in any way like this, that this is available to them and just, just do our best to, to, to communicate that to the public.
And if they, uh, if, one question that I came to mind is, if they are interested and don't fill this out, are we requiring them to do?
Nope, nope, it's just a nice way for them to connect.
Yep.
Um, one other little thought that I have is, I know this is possibly among those items that we would consider as we go back and, uh, and amend. But up to that point, before we would amend the charter, because that's a one or two year process, if any individual council members or department heads would like to offer me any guidance on folks that I might nominate as to not only individuals, but also, you know, some other parameters that you might like to see me consider as I would nominate, I'll, I'll gladly listen to those. I am not a tyrant. So, thank you.
One question about that, one question, a question for us, I get, uh, there's a length of residency thing. And just wondering, I guess I feel, I have an opinion on it, I guess so, but wondering what other people's opinion is, is, if, is that gonna be a criteria? Is length of re- residency what we want? If, and if it isn't, then we shouldn't include it here, because I guess my, I don't state my opinion before it's going, I don't, I don't, I don't, I guess. But my opinion is that it shouldn't be a factor. Um, I guess, I think you're qualified and eager to give them all in the city right off the bat. I think that should be a good qualified, I don't think, granted, we want people that have been here for forty-five, forty, fifty years also. But I just don't, I don't want this to become, and I honestly, this isn't gonna be a jam full of people that are gonna be people of way to use it, hopefully, but not likely. But I don't want this to be viewed as East Grand Forks is only for people that have been here for thirty years or something.
I, I, yeah, yeah, I love, I love the question. First, you know that the template was kind of boilerplate, it was, it was on the website. And, uh, and second of all, I can tell you that Commissioner Gordon, on our, he's on our planning commission, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon, he came relatively new to our community, but had some good experience in planning prior to coming here. So for sure, a new arrival that's very, very well qualified, enthusiastic, they'll come. And, and yet, it's okay to, to know too, even as for how would we connect with that person. You know, they, it's just kind of a, I, so I'm okay to ask it, but it's by no means a stopper.
I just think it's, if you're a new person in the city and it's being asked, that may, may put you off from even continuing. I, I guess I'm just, if you're, if you're being asked, well, how long have you been here, and you know you've only been here for two years, then it's like, well, why am I doing this if this is what they're gonna be debating? I guess, and I, like I said, I, I certainly understand the idea of why you would wanna know, but if we're trying to do it on merit, not Little Boys Club, I guess, or whatever, I, you know, I think that sends the wrong message.
You can even ask the question, why do we have their education on it?
What's that?
You can even ask the question, why is education on here?
Yeah, I mean, but I think that goes to merit, right? I mean, but length of time doesn't necessarily go to merit.
I mean, you could have a eighth grade education, lived here forty years, you knew, you knew everything, you know, you know what I mean?
Chad. So I'm gonna play devil's advocate. If you're, if you're gonna be the guy that doesn't wanna fill it out, because you're worried that you've only been in the city one year, how is that person gonna function as a leader in our community? I mean, that's, that's what I'm just, I mean, if you're confident enough to apply for it and put it in there, then you should be confident enough to be able to go to that commission and step up and just do the job. That's kinda where. We, you get rid of them all, just put your name down. I mean, that kinda, it just, I think it gives, who's ever looking at this, an idea of whatever.
Yep, and there's such a learning curve, if there's a thought that someone was gonna just kinda breeze through, I mean, you'd have to try to pick that up, because there's such a learning curve. You're not effective day one, maybe not in first month, maybe not six months, and your effectiveness starts to build from there. So to have folks committed to stay for a period of time is awfully nice.
Something to think about, if you wanna talk about some more and give Megan.
Can vote on that line.
Whoa. Line item veto.
Wanna go back to number four, Mr. Gordy?
If, if you wanna hold off one second, I know David Murphy.
We gotta go back to number four, they can go down to the end, so. We had, we had to skip one, so you can go, you're on the bottom, right?
Yeah. The only thing that I was looking at, I don't know if I'm on.
You're not on there yet, but let me go back there. Let me do Barry and Mr. Gordy first.
Oh, sure, I was just waiting for Barry, because he's walking up.
Not too many times you can tell a lawyer to be quiet, so.
Oh. Silence in the courtroom.
Can I listen, well?
Good job. Welcome.
Number four, Gro- Minnesota report, Mr. Gordy.
Slide in, bud.
Now's when we see if I can click and talk at the same time. Over the summer, Barry Wilford, who's president, CEO, Chejeh Hacho, the, uh, Big Kahuna, or whatever we wanna call him at the chamber, and I visited thirteen Grand Forks, uh, East Grand Forks businesses. And it was an instructive process, and it was, it's done under the auspices of the Minnesota Chamber. Minnesota Chamber has a grow Minnesota program, and they survey businesses throughout the state. And they're trying to ascertain business climate, impediments to future investments and future growth within, and the things that are being done well as, as well, and they have standardized questions. And what we're bringing to you today is a summary of what we, the information we found. As I said, it's, it programmed the Minnesota Chamber. Um, it was completed this summer, it's to identify community needs, legislative needs, and economic trends. And I've identified firms where there could be follow up. And it asks about management, and it's locally owned, and, and questions like that. And we, what we found is that in East Grand Forks, it's a stable, locally controlled business environment. There's adequate room for expansion right now, but in the future, we're gonna need additional business and industrial space.
So I think that fits with the fact that I think in your long range budget plan, twenty-twenty is when you're looking to bring some additional land online. So I think from a city council perspective, you're right on track in terms of what your primary sector businesses are saying they need. So I think that's the foresight of the part of the council and, and the EDA, so that's, that's, that tracks nicely.
It also talks about products. And are they offering new products, or are they maintaining, uh, just being stable and holding their own? And what we found is the local companies are diversifying and, and they're doing well. Uh, and that was very encouraging. It provides opportunity for future growth, so that, that's a very, very good finding. They talk about the number of employees, and what we found is that workforce demand continues to grow, and that will continue to be an issue. We all know about surveying at the workforce issues, trying to retrain, retain our high school graduates, our college graduates, to keep them here and entice more people into this area to fulfill the jobs. We have a lot of jobs, and in fact, businesses are constrained a little bit because, uh, they're not always finding the people that they need. And that's because there's a mismatch sometimes between job skills and job needs. Our, uh, skills that people have and the needs that people need. Are they having trouble recruiting workers? Yes. As I said, workforce development is a priority for the future. Um, there's an activity going on in first November. In fact, it's the Northern Valley Career Expo that invites high school kids in from both Minnesota and North Dakota from about, there'll be about fifteen hundred kids in tenth graders who come in, each does a half day session at the Alara Center, and they learn about careers. Uh, and they have to visit with companies. There are other activities, such as the things that Barry does at the chamber, with job shadowing, uh, and working with both Northland and with University of North Dakota to, and job fairs and job activities to illustrate that there are tremendous opportunities in this area for people that are interested in going to work. We talked about markets, we found there's a great variety of markets for us. A couple of companies are focused locally, and we have companies that are international companies as well. And they ship their products all over the world. So it's just a nice variety of companies that we have here. And we also found that the companies in East Grand Forks are growing, they're in a growth mode. They have plans for investments, new facilities, major equipment purchases, renovate or current, expand current facilities. I will tell you, uh, last week, at its most recent meeting, the EDA approved a loan for something that grew out of this, for an equipment purchase. So that's good news for the community that companies are investing, and it's an expensive, uh, purchase. And one of the things that, since they're buying it from a Minnesota vendor, and it's a Minnesota company, they were able to take advantage of a sales tax exemption, which is saving them over four thousand dollars on that piece of equipment.
I think part of the reason we do this is to find out that renovate and expand current facilities, those four, Paul knows who those four are. So over the next six, eight months, Paul will be out there visiting with them multiple times again to talk, talk with them about what do we need to do as a community to make sure that they renovate and expand their facilities in our community versus even thinking of moving. And then even the new facilities, three of them are planning on building new facilities. So there's a lot of follow up now that Paul will be able to do, um, in order to really help these businesses grow in East Grand Forks. So that, that again, is really the reason we did this, from a local point of view, that's the biggest benefit.
Absolutely. No surprise here, they have issues with the state business climate. They perceive North Dakota as being more business friendly. Their issues deal around taxes and worker compensation, Minnesota minimum wage, the mandates that come down from the state, the recent reassessments in Polk County that resulted in higher, uh, property taxes, and the regulatory framework including M, uh, MPCA. But when we talk with them about the local situation, they're happy. They'd like to have, uh, another bridge. They are really, uh, pleased about employee and community loyalty. They'd like the weather to be changed, but there's not a lot we can do about that unless we build a dome over the city. Um, they like the fact that the community and city hall are responsive. If they have an issue, they can approach city hall and it gets done, it gets taken care of. And they say that overall, this is a good, solid community to do business in. What I distributed to you today is the press release and a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. If you have any other questions, we'd be glad to talk to you about them and, uh, let us know. It was a very, very good experience.
I think overall, you know, we have a really healthy primary sector business community. I think that's evidenced by these numbers. They wanna grow, we are gonna need to do everything we can to help them from a workforce point of view, um, to make, to allow them to continue to grow. And we need to continue to work on the Minnesota business climate, which, you know, we've been working on for a long time, and we'll continue to have to do that. But I, I felt really the, overall, the, the results of this were very positive, um, for East Grand Forks. So I think we should, I think we're on the right track, and we just need to keep pushing that direction with our local businesses.
It's good news, thank you for presenting that, appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for him, Mr. Demers?
Um, on, like the second to last of your main slides, you talk about issues with state business climate. We've all heard this, I think, being in Minnesota for quite a long time, is that it's just expensive to do business in, in Minnesota and, um, but the, the second part of that, that clause that you gave said is, North Dakota is perceived as more business friendly. And that, I think the key word there is perceived, and I think, I'm wondering what type of, is there any type of program or modeling or some? I'm looking like, is there a way that someone can bring those perceptions to us and we can either, you know, codify or make those a solid, yes, that is a fact? Or is it something that, if they bring that to us and we, we can go through, present that model in a different environment, or model it in North Dakota or whatever and say, no, actually, this isn't? You know, and, and my point is, is perception becomes reality, and if we just allow those perceptions to linger, then that becomes our reality. And I don't, I don't think anybody here knows, and businesses are complex organisms. Um, I mean, everybody has their own kind of pluses and minuses about why they're here and there, and it'd be hard to make a standard model. But I think if we just let it sit out there, that Grand Forks is the better community to do business in, I think that becomes our reality, and I don't agree with it. Um, and I think that we should, that should be the focus of what our economic development is and our, you know, our business development is, is kind of either, and like you said, is, there are some things, whether it's tax code or whatever, and if we identify those, that's the stuff that we can use when we go down to the legislature. Those are the types of things that we can say, but if we just, just have it out there and it's kinda anecdotal, if it's just kind of, yep, North Dakota's got it all, Minnesota's got nothing, I think we, we, we're, we're giving in and we're fighting a losing battle. So I, I guess, I don't know what that model is or how you, you attack those issues, but I, I guess that's the, the way I would.
I have two things to say in response. One, uh, remember last week's council meeting where you approved the marketing study? Part of the way to attack that is to getting the information that we can put into the marketing plan and the marketing study to show where perceptions are real and where perceptions are, are misguided, so that we can deal with these situations on a case by case basis and attack those things that we need to do to put us in a more favorable position. Secondly, I received an email yesterday from a person who's relocated from East Grand Forks to Bismarck. And they talked to me about how much better it, that, how much more expensive Bismarck is to live in than it is to live in East Grand Forks. And it's those types of things that as they become known, make a difference. So that's part of what we have to roll into the marketing plan as well. But it is something the EDA is working on, and I, I hope that as we get the product out of the marketing plan, we can address those kinds of issues.
If the business climate issues, there were a couple of those companies that had a real specific regulation that was affecting them. And so I think getting, helping as a chamber and as a city to get them in touch with the right people at the state level to help work through some of that, that's really what I think we're gonna do on that, versus trying to change the rules per se.
And like, like you said, we make church dollars, let us know, we, we want to be advocates for our business and not just, we're not advocates just for the city government, we're advocates for our businesses and stuff like that too. So let us know, and we'll keep our ears open too.
And, and I think, you know, we, Paul and I are also sensitive that this is a public document, this, this roll up report. We actually have, you know, what are the specific concerns? And, you know, as we prepare to go down to St. Paul several times, you know, during the legislative session, that's a good time for us to kinda get into it in a little bit more detail so that we can actually try to work through some of those challenges so that these businesses can grow. can grow. So that's, that's a good strategy, Mark.
And we've already started talking with representatives from the legislature, who can help us with some of these issues for a couple of particular companies that have regulatory issues.
Henry?
I'd like to make a few comments to the mayor and members of the city council, members of the, and the department heads. For your information, Barry is looking very closely with the Northland Community Technical College. And the door has been opened by Barry to a number of industries, to the Technical College. This year, the Technical College has implemented two new courses. One is an administrative course, Administrative Assistant, and they're doing very well. They're also going on new grounds. They have a manufacturing class, night school. It's first in the state. It's a little different. Every major industry, American Crystal has an illustration, and all the major industries in the city of Grand Forks, probably except one, are having their students attend there. And in many of these classes, in all the building trades, the employers are paying their employees tuition, and they pay everything except their books, so there's a joint movement. The tech school also reaches out to many sources, people, businesses, or scholarships, and I'm very, very familiar with it. And one of the things that you have to remember is that there would not be three clinics in East Grand Forks, and Eltru couldn't exist without the Technical College. And it's amazing, we have, in this school, it's not the largest one, there's some larger ones in the Twin Cities, but we have more medical courses of all types than any other tech school in the state of Minnesota. So the thing is, we have a resource. The important thing is that the mayor, city council, department heads in this community give it strong support. And if you have well-trained people, you don't have to give them away the store on taxes and a lot of other things, because if your people are well-trained, the businesses make money, they can afford everything. It's as simple as that. Am I right, Barry?
I agree with you totally.
And you know, one of the doors-
On the tech school perspective-
One of the doors of a big employer over there helps our farm economy. You've got that door open, but they're not quite ready. Isn't that right?
I think, I think-
You know who I'm talking about.
The manufacturer program that you talked about, there are eight students in that, according to Dennis last week when I talked with him. And five of them are actually being, their tuition is being paid 100% by their employer. So the employers are taking a little different path, too. They're finding people qualified and actually sending them to the tech school at night, and then they're working during the day. That's kind of a new metric that I don't think we've seen that happen very often. But it's happening now with five students this semester, so.
And just to further, there'll be, there'll be some courses that hopefully we can get instituted in the near future, possible night courses that will change the skilled labor supply extensively all over northwestern Minnesota. Not at liberty to make any comments at the present time.
Mary Under?
These gentlemen made a proposal or a presentation to me a few weeks back with some of this material, and it is exciting. It's also exciting to see the linkage that has formed to get this done. And not just you two gentlemen, but you with the wisdom of your board, you with the wisdom of your board, all the many connections that you have out in the community. I've noticed, talking with both of you, that you speak the language of business. And, and we like it, you know, those of us who are out in the, in the business community or the professional community, to know that there's somebody, an advocate here inside of government, here inside the Chamber of Commerce. We're fiercely independent, but if you come along and help us facilitate growth, we appreciate it a ton. And so it's exciting to think of the two of you bringing all the resources that your two organizations have to bear on some of these challenges. And by all means, keep us posted. And of course, let us know, as you say, for example, expanding industrial park and other infrastructure that might have to happen. Keep our, our feet to the, you know, to the ground also, to the next steps that we have to take. So I think it's, it's pretty exciting what's happened here. And, and it does let you be proactive in reaching out to these same businesses, facilitating their growth.
Anybody else have anything for him?
I'd like, I'd like to say one other thing when you're talking about a bridge out in the south. Don Fluen and I were down to the cities when they had hearings on the national highway system. And through the years, of course, the question when the Kennedy Bridge was changed for what it should be named, and I and a few others pushed through the name of the Kennedy Bridge. And Earl Strindon was very vociferous that it shouldn't be named that. And I told him that I would lead the parade if we got a south end bridge to name it the Eisenhower Bridge, because he headed up the National Highway Act. So I don't think that we'll disagree on that. And a lot of people don't understand the conditions at that time. But Eisenhower had one of the most delicate situations involving international war, possible international wars of any president we've ever had. And I happen to know some knowledge about it. I've been around this track quite a while, but it was a great one.
So he deserves a bridge.
Underrated, very much.
He deserves a bridge.
Yes. So-
Maybe call it the new one and tweet the bridge.
Right, Doc?
Anything else, Henry?
Nothing else. I'll quit talking.
Class dismissed, right?
Thanks a lot, guys.
All right. Anything else from you two? Mr. Wilford, Mr. Gorty?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the information. Thank you for all the work you've done. Appreciate it.
Oh, I'd like to say one more time.
We already dismissed the class.
We talked about signs. If you see the Tribune today, you see a number of instances on signage. And I brought up the signage behind the bend at all Presbyterian churches. They come down there 100 miles an hour. There are some stop signs. And we have a lot of children there, senior citizens, so forth. We haven't got it done. We have a responsibility to protect our children. Now, they, I think what should happen, we should look around all of our public buildings, churches, schools, and see if we can have signage. Now, one of the problems the chief of police will tell you is people on the cell phones too often. We get some tragic accidents. We had one here when a prominent Grand Forks businessman got killed about two, three years ago. But I think every alderman and the aldermen in large, the mayor should look over the entire city. I went by the day to look at the Christian school over there as an illustration. But we work very close with the police department, come up a master plan of signage, so that we protect all of our children and our older people. Now, we're doing, we've implemented a safety deal on the curbs all over town. There's extensive amount of work going up around the schools and the churches and everything in the north end. But let's take and have a safe city. This man over here in his department has been making it safe for many, many years. Let's help him.
Move on, Mr. Gallstand. Talk about the-
I've nothing to say.
Oh, jeez. Sorry.
No. Mr. Murphy received a letter from the Polk County regarding the tax-forfitted properties in the city of East Grand Forks. There's a lot on the point, just off of Greenway Boulevard, 13th and 11th there, I'm not exactly sure, I don't have a picture of it, that went tax-forfitted. The county needs us to do one, well, needs to, wants us by October 13th to designate it, to fill out a form for designation purposes. Essentially, that property would be designated non, non-conservative property. What you can do then with that property is either, either buy for the, the value, or the city, if they wanted, they could get it for free. However, there would be a used deed, and then there would be specific public purposes that you could only use that property for, streets, parks, camping, parking lots, those types of things. So first and foremost, we need to fill out that form before the 13th and designate it the non-conservative property, which is the designation that it would get according to statute. And then, secondly, we need to decide what, if anything, we want to do with that property, whether we want to purchase it, then it would be at our, you know, then we would, we would use it and could use it at our discretion. If we want to get it free under a used deed, if there's some use that we could think that we'd have for a public purpose, or we can just let it go for tax forfeiture sale. The question that came up regarding that from Mr. Murphy is, we have a significant amount of special assessments that are on that. So if it goes back into private use by a sale, the city then can make a determination to, to place those unpaid-for assessments for improvement projects back on that lot, or up to the full amount, or anywhere in between. So he just asked me to bring this up, notify you, and then we need to talk about, at least, we don't have to make a decision today, but get in the discussion how we would like to proceed regarding that, that lot.
Tim? So in other words, the individual forfeiting can't just come back and pay the $10,000, we can still assess them for that amount?
Well, the individual forfeiting, if they redeemed that property or bought it back, then it would just, you know, realistically, it would go back on that property. However, whether it was that person or any other private individual, if somebody decided that they wanted to buy that property, we could then put the non-paid special assessments for any of those local improvements back on to that, that property, up to the total amount. You know, that would be the discretion of the council.
And include interest, too? Continuing interest?
Well, then it would, it would, yes, at that point, that it was put on. We put on what the value is at this time, and then, and then it would be accrual of interest, just like any other special assessment.
But any back interest would not be-
It seemed to me that-
I don't believe so. Whatever it would be due.
I think that was his question, yeah.
It seemed to me that they, it built up all around there, that the value of the land would increase, and the assessments will cost more in the future. But I, I think we should be very firm to protect the city in everywhere possible, and he agrees with me.
Yeah, that's just your options.
And we need to have this decision by next week, what we're doing?
What's your recommendation?
Well, the, the recommendation that I would have is to fill out that form that puts it as non-conservative property. And then what the city wants to do would be a policy matter on whether or not they want to buy that parcel for the assessed value for themselves and deal with it, or if they want to let it go up for private, you know, private sale on the auction.
So if we buy, can we convert it back to private use after that and then put the specials back on? Or is that a-
You can, yeah. As long, if you're going to buy it with, for the cash value, then you can utilize it, or sell it, or develop it, or do whatever you need to do. It's only if you get it for free as a tax-
So if we pay $10,000, if you pay that, and then we sell, put the tax, the special dollar amount in the price of the lot to sell it?
And I'm not sure, I'd have to double-check and talk to the county on whether or not they're saying that the actual value that they're going to sell it for at the, would be that $10,000. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's their, their starting price at this, at an auction or not. So I haven't had a chance to talk to Michelle Cody regarding that. When I made a phone call, she was busy, and I was in court all day and didn't get to talk to her today. Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Three things. This was for Ms. Ellis. On that property, it's an irregular shape. With any setbacks and offsets, are we still, is it still potentially buildable?
More than buildable.
Buildable for 2,000 square foot to 3,000 square foot?
Yeah, it's definitely buildable. This one's 30 feet back. You know, you turn it, you angle it, you put it here, you put it here, face it this way with that as your backyard, you've got plenty of space.
Okay. Right. And then-
This one was, you only have one specific location, but this one, you have plenty of, you can face it this way, you can face it this way, you can, you can face it this way. I mean, it's, it's more than buildable, so.
If, can we let it go to, like, public auction and then make our decision after the public auction whether or not we want to purchase it or acquire it? If we purchase it, then we can do whatever we want? Because I guess my, my preference would be to let it go to public auction or public, I don't know.
Well, you would have, you would have to purchase it then at the public auction. You have the ability to do that before it even goes to sale.
Right. I guess my point is, is if we don't have to interject ourselves in the process, if it just goes to a public auction, I was saying, if it doesn't sell at public auction or doesn't hit the reserve or whatever, then it would come to us as a decision then to either pay the $10,000 and use it as we wish, or acquire it and just use it for a restricted purpose.
If it goes to auction, it's a bid, it's gone. We would have it on the line.
Well, I would imagine they would have a reserve, right? Or-
But then it goes to them.
I haven't asked them what, but they're, they're going to put a, they're going to put a starting value on it. I don't know what that starting value is. I don't know if it's this $10,000 that they have as a basic sale price or not. I have to, that's what I have to talk to Michelle about.
Right. And I guess my preference is to have someone else buy it. I don't think the city, I mean, because I would imagine what we would do with it is try to sell it as a lot. So if we can take ourself out of that, I don't see why we would want to interject ourself in that process. The second thing I have is, if, if it goes to tax forfeiture, does that lot still retain its, like, restrictive covenants and stuff?
Yes.
All the restrictive covenants, what if we purchase it?
If we purchase it, we're purchasing it just like anything else, and it's got easements, right-of-ways.
But there's restrictive covenants on that property, right?
I have no idea what's on that property. I haven't had a chance to take a look at it. It was just brought to my attention. I'm not even sure what utilities are on it at this point.
Based on the developer, he has restrictive covenants on all of his, in addition.
But it's still in the plat, it's still in the addition. So any restrictive covenant that would be on that property would be in, would be on the plat and on the addition.
No, 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 no. Restrictive covenants aren't on the plat.
Well, I mean, it would be, it would be in the title. So just because, just because it was tax-forfitted, it doesn't get rid of any easements or restrictions that would-
But if we purchased it, we could remove those from the title, then? They're there indefinitely?
Yes, unless you get the other individuals in the, in the development or in that plat that has the restrictive covenants to go along with your removal or changing of them.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I forgot.
Anybody else have any questions? So we have time to think about it till next week. What do you guys want to do?
Well, certainly. It's just, those are, those are the three options that you really have. The only, the main pressing thing is that we're, we just need to, before the 13th, fill out the form that designates the property as non-conservative property. If we wanted to do something before, before that, you can make that decision.
I do have one, one question. So you are fully convinced if it did go through public auction, purchased by a private party, and they either kept it or built on it, you'd have no trouble at all coming back and re-attaching our special assessments? No trouble at all?
No, no trouble at all. Statute- Statutorily, it's allowed and it's done all the time. It's Minnesota statute 444.25.
Thank you.
I had to look it up.
All right. Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll move on. Move on to adjournment. By Grassel.
sounded like dick over there.
Second by Riappell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried. Meanings adjourned.